And we are on to the next item.
Item 9F, Adopt Resolution Approving Service Level Enhancements for Fiscal Year 2018-19 Operating Budget.
Connie, did you want to begin? Would you like to begin?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on the, at the June, at the second meeting in June, when the City Council considered approval of the proposed fiscal year 1819 operating and capital budgets, the City Council requested that staff bring back consideration of the supplemental enhancement items that were proposed as part of the budget. Specifically, the City Council asked that that, that this information be returned for additional consideration with staff's reevaluation and focus on what are the most important of the enhancements that had been proposed, how to pay for them, and consideration of reducing costs. Staff has done that, although I think you will see that there is a relatively modest change to the items that are actually proposed. We have, however, reorganized and provided some additional information that we hope will be consistent with the City Council's direction and enhance your consideration of these items. First, I'd like to explain that the manner in which the supplemental enhancements, service level enhancements, were developed both this year and in all prior years, and why we do it that way. First, the enhancements were developed with very specific focused consideration of urgent operational needs at the current time and that are projected to continue into the future. And in addition to that, staff is very mindful of the City Council's priority for the budget to be developed in a manner that contains and controls all costs and that represents a clear statement of any changes and any additions that were not previously approved by the City Council. As such, the supplemental enhancements really represent a focused effort to provide clarity and transparency. Anything that represents a significant change, and what I mean by that is not just a cost increase from a vendor for a, an item of necessity that is purchased as a supply on a regular ongoing basis in order to provide necessary city services or staff cost increases through negotiated MOUs or through other benefits providers that are not subject to the City Council's direct immediate control. So really, everything else is represented to you in the supplemental enhancements. And again, that's for the purpose of absolute clarity, cost containment, and transparency. The attachment to the staff report that you have for tonight's meeting shows our reorganization of those recommended items that were previously presented in the proposed budget. And we're going to address, in our presentation tonight, where we will address the items in two parts as they're shown in that attachment. The first set of items in the attachments, in the attachment, are those items that represent items that are necessary to continue existing service levels. And I want to explain that a bit because in previous years, we have not had as many items that really represent changes that are necessary to continue existing services. There are three staff positions listed in this first half of the items on your attachment that represent staff positions that need to be reclassified in order to assure the continuation of services that are now already being performed in order to meet council and community expectations in a changed manner over the way that services were delivered in previous years. Those services are being performed by existing employees who are working out of class. They're be, working out of class, performing some services at a higher level than is being, than they are being compensated for under their regular position. As such, and is provided in the MOU and with the authority that is provided to the city manager, those job duties are currently being compensated to those employees by virtue of their receiving what we call special circumstances pay. What's proposed here is reclassification of one existing code enforcement officer position to senior code enforcement officer, one custodian position to lead custodian, and one cable technician position to cable head end technician. The amounts shown in the attachment represent the incremental increase amount that would be spent in order to accomplish those reclassifications. And as I indicated, in each case, individuals now performing those duties are doing so with special circumstances pay. Should these items not be approved and should that special circumstances compensation no longer be provided, it is my expectation that we would not be able to perform the services that are currently being provided and we would be taking essentially a step backwards with respect to necessary activities. A new building inspector 1-2 classification was approved as part of the mid-management MOU that was adopted by the City Council late last year and that took effect in January of this year. According to that bargaining unit agreement, a new classification was to be established for the existing building inspector class. There are two individuals currently authorized at the building inspector position. We are authorized to employ two building inspectors. This change, and it's really just a change, and again called out for the purposes of accountability and transparency, that building inspector position would be reclassified to allow appointment at either a 1 or a 2 level. The remaining two items in the first half of this list are positions, one a, at full-time allocation and one at eight hours per week, the limited term, the associate planner and the contract plans examiner. Both of those positions have actually been filled on an annual one-time basis every year since 2015-16. So for the past three years, those positions have been funded and filled and continue to be necessary, given the high volume of building activity, building and planning activity. That high level of activity is continuing, is projected to continue for the foreseeable future. And for fiscal year 1819, revenues in the planning and building area have, are shown in our, in our now adopted budget to be somewhat over $800,000 more than was collected in fiscal year 1718. So I'm going to pause for a moment here and suggest that the City Council consider those, that first set of supplemental items. Again, they are all highly recommended and they represent items that, without which we would be, we do, would be needing to reduce services over those that are currently being performed. I will have additional comments for the second set of items here and we'll pause now for your comments.
So questions to staff in regards to the continued existing service levels? I'll just go around and see if there are so we can chime in Laura as well. I mean, anything at this time?
I appreciate the additional information and I believe all of the service levels that you've listed here are necessary.
Michael or Marty? Michael?
I don't have any questions on what was covered in this part.
Okay. Marty, anything on the existing service level?
Yes, just on the limited term planner position. So I see that there's some cost recovery on that. The, so $59,000 of that, $139,000 for those that don't have it, isn't covered. And is there, is there a way that you could be, that managing that, the staff person to make sure they're more, have more cost recovery? If it's related to a project, how, how could we increase that? Or how did you, how does that number, how did you come up with that? How did that, how did staff come up with that number? Of the, the revenue of $80,000?
Both the $80,000 for the social planner position and the $37,000 for the...
Did you want more?
For the, for the contract plans examiner are real estimates. So it's not precise to begin with. But what it really represents is by having these folks picking up more routine and counter work is allowing permanent full-time staff to devote 100% of their time ultimately to revenue generating projects. And so it is really that offset and the, and the ability of the full-time staff to devote more time to generating results in this offset. So these, these folks are not going to generate it themselves, they're going to allow the full-time staff to generate this additional revenue.
Right. Thank you for that. I understand the, the counter plans examiner, that's great to have somebody there being able to do a quick plan check and it's pretty much fully cost recoverable. I'm just a little concerned about having a planner at the counter just to fill in where it would be more appropriate for somebody as a, as a tech to be at the, our counter person?
This is not a planner at the counter, this is a planner performing planning functions. And this planner is doing work associated, as Finance Director indicated, that work is generally described as the more routine planning applications, residential additions, that type of thing that allow the full-time staff to focus, or the, the regular permanent staff to focus more deliberately on the very high volume of major development projects that are continuing to be coming in our door.
Got it. So I would have no issue of the, with the other five than the planner position?
Okay. So let me just do that. Okay. Laura, any questions or comments regarding the existing service levels?
No comments of concern.
Okay. So here's what I've heard.
Well, I was going to move that we approve those.
Okay. So Marty, would I hear you correctly with the 1-2, everything was fine for yourself, the associate planner position? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Should we take?
Through the chair?
Go ahead.
If I could, I do have another question.
Please.
So I didn't have questions specifically on what was presented, but I did want some clarification on the budget overall. So I'm looking back to June 26th and the general fund budget that we approved. And in this budget, in the, in the report, it said that our expenditures exceeded revenue by $1.4 million roughly. So my question is that $1.4 million included all of these enhancements or it did not include these enhancements?
Did not.
Did not. So we've currently taken roughly half a million from surplus funds from this, or this past fiscal year, plus another half a million from general fund reserve to balance that.
So let me, let me address the general fund reserves first. The, I believe you might be talking about the amount that was proposed in the general fund operating budget to be transferred in from the general fund reserve in order to address a shortfall in, or an unexpected loss of revenue that would otherwise be received in sales tax due to the closure of a major automobile dealer. As I mentioned at the meeting, the, that is no longer a concern and we are proposing that the City Council formally approve that elimination of that transfer and increase of the sales tax revenue to fund the general fund budget because there was actually a minor, maybe two weeks lapse in the business activity at that auto dealer before a new owner picked up and immediately continued operations. So although we anticipated that at the time the budget was prepared, that has not come to fruition and we are not expecting, we are, we are proposing that the budget, when the final budget is produced, that that transfer be eliminated.
Okay. So given that, what then is our final position on last year's budget? Did we, I mean, or actually what, the budget that we just approved for this current fiscal year, are we starting off with balancing it with transfer from, or any transfer at all from the general fund, the general fund reserves?
No. No transfers from general fund reserves.
But I think with the council member, I'd be asking, there is a carryover.
And the carryover, that's the other piece.
There is a use of $932,000 from the prior year fund balance, which is shown in the budget and is still the best number we have. A positive ending balance for fiscal year 1718 is 3.2, roughly 3.25 million.
Can you repeat that last part? I'm sorry.
The estimated ending balance from 1718, the year closed on June 30th, positive balance of revenues over expenditures of 3.25 million.
Okay. Could I just say that?
Of course.
We are projecting at the, and again, we don't have any more information three, 10 days into July than we did really when the budget was, was acted on. So we're still relying on the numbers that were presented to you in the budget. And as the city manager indicated, we were projecting the ending fund balance in the general fund was a positive $3.2 million for the end of 1718. If the City Council wanted to continue its policy of maintaining the balance in that general fund at a minimum of $1.5 million, it would mean that 1.7 would be available for, 1.7 would be available for use in 1718, in 1819, I'm sorry. The council has already approved $900,000 use in adopting the 1819 budget, meaning that about $800,000 would be available for supplemental or some other similar type of use.
Okay. And given that and future projections, so we had the surplus in this last fiscal year, do we anticipate to have a similar surplus next fiscal year, at the end of this current fiscal year? I'm sorry.
I would say that's a fair assessment, although we don't know. It has been the case that in each of several previous years, for example, at the end of 1617, the positive fund balance was 2.75 million. And the year before that, 1516, was 1.73 million.
And, and I would only add that I think based on history and based on projections, I think one could assume that there will be available amounts. I think the recognition or the understanding as we go forward, in particular as labor costs and retirement costs go up, the amount that is available is going to go, one would assume, the amount available is going to be less and less going forward. And that was, I think, the basis for our projection that in the year 2021, a great deal, a great deal of caution would be necessary that that, that gap will become fairly small.
Okay.
I don't want to say disappear, but it'll become noticeably smaller.
So potentially within three years, we might not be able to afford what we approved today?
That, I, I think is the point of the revenue presentation on April 30th, is three years from now, the council needs to anticipate some caution. Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. There were some changes that happened in there and...
It was vague, it was vague, but it's, hopefully it was helpful.
Yes, yes, indeed. Because I think the perception from the public was that we were starting from a negative position and that, you know, our budget had, that we were short a million and a half. And in fact, I don't think that is true. So our position right now is far more favorable than what was initially predicted. So I think that's an important point, that our baseline isn't as dire. I still have concerns though that we're, we're committing to things that we already know could potentially become a problem a couple of years down the road.
Connie?
Well, I was just going to concur with what the council member said and remind the City Council that the discussion on April 30th and the projection, we believe remains valid. And the recommendation and the council's understanding, I believe, at that time was that new sustainable, ongoing revenue strategies need to be implemented. And the discussion tonight is, is part of that. The earlier discussion this evening moves a bit in that direction. However, new tax measures, voter-approved measures really do need to be more thoughtful, more completely and thoughtfully evaluated in order that they can be implemented. And if, if that is not the intent of the City Council, then I think your assessment is correct, that these items are not affordable and there is no choice but to abandon movement forward as, as the city has already embarked and to essentially move backward.
Well, I just, I just wanted to add on, I appreciate that, that insight and it's certainly not my intent to move backwards. And I, I do understand the need for the positions, I, but my concern remains that we're maybe putting the cart before the horse by saying that, you know, at some point down the road, we're going to successfully pass another tax. I don't know that San Bruno has been historically favorable to more taxes and I don't know that we could be successful in doing it. So clearly, we need to do something, but without knowing that it's, you know, that the check's in the mail, it's, it's risky to take on the expenditures without knowing that the revenue is there. So, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? So what I've heard from all so far, correct me, is that it sounds like everybody's 100% on board with the exception of the associate planner position. Am I incorrect on that?
You heard one person say that.
No, I know. But, right, but on the other items, correct? Correct? Laura, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we want to go ahead and take those items minus the limited term associate planner? At least we can pass those within the continued existing services. We could take a separate vote on the associate planner position? Would that be okay with the council?
Sure. I move that we approve the supplemental requests for continued existing, to continue existing service levels for all the positions except the new, no, which one is it? The limited associate planning position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion, a second, to approve all within the continued existing services level with the exception at this time of the limited term associate planner position. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
No.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Okay. So I guess I misunderstood when I asked, were all the rest okay with everybody? But, okay. Yeah. Because I would have divided it out differently.
And it wouldn't have made a difference.
Okay.
My concern remains the same. It's not that I disagree with the positions.
Oh, okay.
I just want to know that we can take one before we...
I just misunderstood and I apologize. Okay. So the reason I wanted to take the limited term associate planner position is I think I'd like to hear, to be fair to the department, from the director, and maybe can give the detail of that and then we can go ahead and take a vote on that.
So the director is obviously very anxious to speak to you about this and as he approaches the table here, I would just note in, in response to a council member comment, in response to one of the council member comments earlier, the revenue is estimated and again, we watch very carefully and would manage the position. Again, this is proposed as, on a, on a one-time basis as a means of being able to cut it off at, at a point where it was determined that the work, the workload and/or the revenues were insufficient to continue justification of the position.
Go ahead, please.
So limited duration means exactly what I just said, that it provides an opportunity for the city to hire or to staff that position either on a contract basis or with a, with a, an employee with the understanding and the expectation that that position does not have permanent tenure with the city. It would be, could potentially be a benefited position if it was hired by the city. And again, we, we always make appropriate analysis of the best way to staff, the best being the most cost-effective way to staff. So with that, I'll, I'll let the director make some comments.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak about this position. As the city manager indicated, during this timeframe, we have a large amount of development activity in the community. We share that with you during the budget study sessions. And in terms of expected revenue coming into the Community Development Department, we're expecting that there will be an increase of over $800,000 coming into the department this fiscal year, this current fiscal year. This particular position, I would suggest that it be a contract position, that it be a one-year contract position. We could evaluate it, as the city manager indicated, on an annual basis. I do firmly believe that this person in this position, it's currently filled... I do firmly believe that this person in this position, it's currently filled, that this person is performing a large amount of work, both at the counter, reviewing building applications for compliance with planning and zoning requirements, providing information to our public, working on private development projects that have application fees, by the way. We're projecting the application fees to be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year. And in terms of taking work that would otherwise be done by the permanent staff, this eighty thousand dollar estimate of cost recovery is extremely conservative. So in sum, I think it would be advisable to, as the city manager indicated, to monitor this position, to make sure that we're as cost-efficient as possible. But this particular position is offering tremendous benefit to our customers and our organization. And I firmly believe, in terms of cost recovery, both in terms of allowing our permanent staff to do work on such projects as 111 San Bruno Avenue, the Mills Park Project, the Bay Hill Project, the recent Skyline Project, that our permanent staff will be generating cost recovery significantly higher than eighty thousand dollars. And there will be projected about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in application fees. And to give you kind of some sense of, say, the plans examiner, another position you've already supported, I've asked the person that's been doing that to give me kind of a sense of where he is in terms of generation of funds to offset those costs, which were thirty-seven thousand dollars. In the fiscal year seventeen eighteen, that individual generated plan checks that resulted in about fifty-six thousand dollars in revenue to the city. And already, this fiscal year, given a large plan check that came in, this individual was able to do, the sum that we're estimating is thirty-seven thousand dollars for the year. To date, we're at July ten, we've taken in thirty-nine thousand. So my sense is that we have looked at this very carefully. I firmly believe that if we have this associate planner position in place, that there will be cost recovery to cover this position, both through the application fees and the cost recovery of permanent staff, and that this will be a tremendous benefit to our customers and our organization. So I strongly request that you approve the position.
Thank you, David. Questions of David?
Nice. Very, that was good. You got me.
Good. Thank you.
Michael?
Thank you for providing that information, and I agree with your approach. And I think that it's a very wise approach. This position does seem safe because there is some recovery. I like the fact that you're going to reevaluate it annually and that it's not a long-term commitment and should coincide nicely with our development boom, so I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, I mean? Laura, any question or comment?
I just thank you for that additional information.
Okay, and I'm good. So, can we have a motion in regards to the limited-term associate planner position?
Move to approve.
A motion is there? There's a motion and a second to approve the limited-term associate planner position. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. So the next one are new requests, and I know the city manager will give an overview. And I also believe that, out of courtesy and respect to the staff and the department heads, that it might be of value, too, to hear from them as well, if they have any additional commentary, or, again, we may have some questions. I don't know if council wants to take it one by one, there's not tons here, but, Conny, I'll let you start if you could, please.
Yes, so my thoughts are aligned with yours, Mr. Mayor. And what I would recommend is that we could go ahead and start. As the Public Works Director, I've asked each director to be prepared to provide you with a one-minute summary of these items, so hopefully they can provide you with a compelling and brief statement. And there are three items on this list that represent needs identified through the Public Works Department. Two full-time maintenance workers to support stormwater activities, replacement of out-of-compliance traffic signs, which is a limited-term operation for each of approximately four years to get through the accumulated number of non-compliant signs. And then, thirdly, the re-establishment of fencing at intersections adjacent to the pine box color.
So, Mr. Tan, we'll take on the three items within one minute?
Let's see if he can.
No, please, you have three items, so don't rush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Good evening. You know, as I mentioned during the budget study session, I think one of the most important requests here is the stormwater positions, the two FTEs for maintenance workers. And that's, this is something that, you know, we normally don't come up here and ask for, but it's a mandated, mandated items that are being imposed by the regional board for all the agencies up and down the peninsula, including the entire state of California. So the regional board requires the city to implement these strict control measures to reduce the trash loads into the storm systems. And the city, as we presented, you know, about a couple of months ago, we went ahead and were planning to install one hundred and eighty-eight trash capture units. And that will total about a two-hundred-and-fifty units in our city. And eventually, you know, by twenty twenty-two, the city will end up having to meet the 100% trash reduction goals. And it will either require additional trash capture units or we would have to install a larger unit somewhere in our storm system, which is currently, at this moment, as part of their feasibility study, it's not looking quite good at this moment. So, you know, in order for us to meet the twenty eighteen goal of 80%, we have to install the one hundred and eighty-eight trash capture units. So this mandate, by doing that, you know, additional cleanings is required. MRP requires the staff to go out there and clean these trash capture units at least three to six times a year. And for Sematelo Avenue, which is a high trash loading generating areas, staff are, there's fifty-five trash capture units that are currently installed, and staff are currently out there three to six times a year cleaning those units. So there would be more units installed by the end of this year. We're currently getting that contract with United Stormwater started within the next couple of weeks. So a lot of these storm, right now, the stormwater division staff, we only have three staff for that, for Stormwater Division. And their majority of their tasks are, right now, dealing with a lot of legal dumping issues. And as the councils were, at least, you know, about a year and a half ago, we had extensive, you know, issues regarding legal dumping. A lot of people were complaining about it, and it's more staff time we're dedicated to resolve or to alleviate the legal dumping issues. And with that, you know, the staff picked up, you know, back in twenty sixteen, about four-hundred-and-six locations. And then in twenty eighteen, we had nineteen-hundred-and-twenty-three locations that were picked up for illegal dumping. So, you know, it's not going to go away. And so if we try to reallocate staff from, away from that and doing other things that we need to do, it's going to create more, you know, issues down the line for other, you know, items that we need to do, you know, as part of the stormwater. So I do have our street and stormwater manager here, that can answer a lot more questions. You know, I have a whole list of all the existing, I know during a budget study session, there are some requests about what the existing staff were doing, and what are these, you know, staff were doing. I have a whole list of items here, which, you know, I only have a minute, so I won't go through. And so, you know, yeah, but, you know, it is. And I totally understand, you know, there's budget issues, but this is a mandate that's imposed by the regional board. That's something that, you know, I'm not here to request if I don't need to. That's my position here. In regards to the two other items, one of them is fence, that's the Sulla request, you know, with the implementation of the Sulla software. There is, you know, I have all the requests over here for all the fences that are located, you know, within the pine box. The one, these are parallel fences that are parallel along with the streets. So we have all these requests that we see from Sulla that we haven't fixed. So that's part of the thirty-five thousand dollars. And it could be a little bit less than thirty-five thousand dollars, but that's the budget that we're using right now. And we're going to try to get cost, updated cost proposals from the fence contractors. And so we don't have to come back and request for additional funds for that. And as far as the other items that we, that we're requesting is the sign replacement. So these are traffic signs. The city completed the traffic sign condition assessment in fiscal year seventeen eighteen. And this is a proactive measure, so we have about, you know, four-thousand-nine-hundred traffic signs in our city. And about 55% of those are, you know, doesn't meet the MUTCD requirement. So it's regards to the minimum levels of retroreflectivity and legibility. So all these signs, you know, needs to be replaced. And so the city's, the staff is proposing to put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for four years to try to get these signs replaced. That's, I have. Yeah, and it's potentially be a liability issue, too, if these, you know, if an accident happens, you know, in that place. Who knows? If there's no retroreflectivity of these signs, that are not there, so.
Questions from council or comments? Good. Michael?
The chair, thank you. So, again, I understand the need for the positions and for the, for all of the enhancements. I agree with the necessity for doing a lot of things. Where I have a little bit of an issue is where we add personnel. And people tend to be very, very expensive, especially over time. And I believe we have purse concerns that we have to worry about. And it does seem like we're going to invest a lot of effort in running around picking up trash. And I know that's mandated. And what I would like to see, you vaguely alluded to a solution of having a bigger capture system, where we let the trash all get in there, and then we pick it up all centrally in one place. And I know you said that's a much more expensive solution. But I'm wondering if we look at, if we project out having 100% capture at the, in the neighborhoods, at the sewers, over time, and however many people that's going to take to accomplish, does it then start making more sense to maybe do something more centrally that's less labor-intensive but requires a bigger initial cost? But perhaps over time balances out. I don't know that that's the case. But I don't know that we've actually seen that option presented. So before we go too far down the route of doing this other thing. The other thing I have a concern about is really how much effort we're spending in picking up illegal dumping. I mean, that's a concern, and I know that, you know, the residents have made it a big issue, and you guys are doing your best to respond to it. But is that really where we want to expend all our efforts in, you know, picking up stuff that people are dumping illegally? I mean, that's a concern. And, you know, I'm worried about, you know, the fact that we have to maintain that level of service to do something that's, I mean, I guess some people would consider that a core service that the city should provide. But honestly, that's, it really does seem like it's something that could be avoidable if we could do something more, maybe outreach to the public and just acknowledge, get them to acknowledge that they really shouldn't be doing it. And in some cases, maybe if we rush out there to pick it up, we're encouraging to do more of it. And it sounds like it's getting somewhat better, but, I mean, that's a concern as well. So, I mean, I don't have an issue with the, definitely the signs, I think we need to do those. That's a smaller cost. Fencing, that's a small cost. I don't think I have an issue with any of those requests. But the personnel issues, I mean, I know you guys need help out there, but it's, I mean, I'd really like to see more data on whether there are alternatives to just bringing on headcount just to empty out sewer grates and pick up other people's trash.
Well, in regards to the large unit, the feasibility, the trash capture feasibility study that was done by a consultant that was completed last fiscal year, it shows that, you know, there's no way to put a large trash capture device within our storm drain system. So it has to be installed within the channel, the San Bruno Channel, which is not owned by the city of San Bruno. You have permitting issues involved that could take years. And, you know, the city, you know, is in a situation where, you know, as for us here, we're trying to prevent the cities from getting a notice of violation, right? So currently, there's one agency in the Sematelo County that already has one. You know, we're doing our best to try to prevent that from happening. And sometimes, it's a difficult situation to have more personnel on board. But, you know, in reality, you know, we've already looked at the options as part of the feasibility study. So in order to put it, install a CDS unit or large trash capture unit, it's not going to be, it's, right now, it's most likely it's not going to be an option on the table for us. But that's something that we will continue to study, because we have, from twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen until twenty twenty-two, you know, we have several years there, or twenty twenty-one, we have several years there to, in order for us to evaluate that option. But we don't have ingress egress into the San Bruno Channel to, in order to maintain the units, because we don't own any of the properties around there at all. So we're actually in a bind here currently for us. And, you know, the only solution that we see right now is to install these drain units, capture units, which is not an ideal solution. But in order for us to meet the deadline, that's what we had to do. So in order to, for us to prevent, or in order to actually meet the percentage trash capture goals requirement that's imposed by the regional board. So we were at 71%. We needed to be 70% by twenty eighteen. So we were there, we're at 71%, we barely made it. So we need to be at 80% by twenty nineteen. And so that's the reason why we came up with the one hundred and eighty-eight units, because there's no other way to do it.
The director briefly alluded to violations. I would just point out to the council that these are violations of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System requirements, NPDES. Might sound familiar. That is the same set of regulations, or the basic set of regulations, governing clean water requirements and sewer discharges. The city was fined over six hundred thousand dollars a few years ago for violations of the NPDES regulations in operation of the sewer system. So we subject ourselves potentially not only to violations or citations for violations, but the specter of very significant fines and penalties and even potentially lawsuits that derive from the Clean Water Act requirements that allow citizen lawsuits, essentially special interest lawsuits. Just on the pickup of the illegal dumping, this was the pickup of illegal dumping, I believe, at least initially, and I believe still, is requiring roughly half-time, daily, five days a week, two individuals. Neither, both they, their supervisor, and I believe the director, would like nothing more than for us to be able to cut that service off, not a plum job, and one that is taking away time from our streets and stormwater crews and from activities that we need to pursue in order to meet the NPDES requirements. The challenge is that, I think we all remember where we were and what type of public concern arose from the situation before we were able to get a handle on it. And that was not without continuing significant public education. But changing behavior of individuals in our community has proved to be exceptionally challenging on the scale that would need to be done in order to address the issue in a manner that is, at least... in a manner that is, um, at least acceptable, not optimal, but acceptable to, uh, to the public, the council and staff.
If, if we were, say, to eliminate the illegal dumping portion of what's been assigned to, to our staff, would we be able to accomplish what we need to do on the, um, on the other portion of the mandated portion? And with maybe some seasonal help rather than the addition of full-time staff?
Maybe I can ask, um, the street and storm manager to chime in on that.
Plus you've been sitting here all night, so we want, we want you to be able to speak.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Ted Chapman, Service Manager for Street and Storm. In regards to, as if we were able to completely eliminate illegal dumping, which will not happen, um, unfortunately, that would basically put an eight-hour staff back on. Basically, we would still need to have another person on there if we were able to utilize that full-time employee for working on cleaning the trash capture devices. Trash capture devices are something that's going to be, have to be maintained year-round, not just seasonal. It's just like today, we were in preparation with wing in our next install. We're looking at trash capture devices that were cleaned a month and a half ago that are now ready to be cleaned again. So we are increasing our count up to two-hundred-and-fifty and that's going to basically require a two and three-man crew to maintain them basically year-round, um, is what's anticipated. From what we see from the existing devices we have and moving forward to having a, uh, an increased amount, especially in our downtown area, because even though we have two men down there, four hours a day cleaning up, the, um, business owners and the clientele that's downtown, a lot of trash is going directly into the storm drains, even though we have trash receptacles and everything. So those devices along Sametail Avenue, there's about eighty of them that are going in there. Those are going to have to be maintained probably on a monthly basis to keep those clean. Any other, I hope that helped explain a little?
Thank you for that. Is there any sort of equipment that could assist in making the, the job go quicker so that you could get along with less people, some kind of a, I know you have the, they have the little green, uh, street sweeper downtown? If you had something like that that could like go by and just, you know?
Actually, we, we do utilize the green machine a little bit. Originally when that was purchased back in oh-seven, oh-eight, they tried to use it for cleaning the trash capture devices. Due to the size of the hose, it would, it gets plugged up. So we end up, we roll the vector out when we do the full cleaning because we actually have to wash the screens off within the trash capture devices. So we actually utilize our vector when we are cleaning these. And though that vector will be rolled out probably every other day because some can be cleaned by hand, but the majority are with the vector.
Wow, what's that going to do to wear and tear on the vector?
It's going to cause wear and tear on the vector. But we, we have two vectors. We have the wastewater vector and then we have the shared vector between street, or between street and storm and wastewater. That vector will be pretty much dedicated to storm water moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Questions, why, Ted?
Um, I nonexistent.
Go ahead, Marty.
Jimmy, I feel for you, man. It's, it's, you're in a very, very difficult position. As we are, we got a lot of things that we have to do. And we have to prioritize the things that we could suffer violations and penalties on versus everything else we do in our city. I agree with what Michael was mentioning earlier about, about the, our untenable situation with our budget. I've got the notes from our April thirtieth, um, review. And in twenty-twenty-one, we have to come up with five million dollars more. Two million of that is to pay for the regular salaries and an additional three million is for our employee benefits. I mean, that's, if that's not scary, I don't, I don't know what is. So that's in twenty-twenty-one, so probably nineteen, twenty, we, it's probably two and a half million more than where we're at from two thousand eighteen and nineteen. Is that fair? Finance Director, O'Leary. How are we going to pay for it? Putting, counting on, I mean, we can't count on the tax measure because that, we can't do that until two thousand nineteen. So, um, we have to prioritize and we have to do the storm thing. Well, we could do it with full-time staff or we're going to have to hire temporary staff. Kind of wait until we get this, uh, tax measure passed. We have to figure out how to, to do what we have to do until we get the money that we could potentially ask our ratepayers, our residents, taxpayers. So I, I find it very difficult to sit here and say, to tell you no. I find that very difficult. But I got to find a different answer. We can do it a different way of bringing in temporary workers. Now, that's not a popular thing to say, I understand in our, our city. I'm a union member, Local Three in, in, in Alameda County Water District. But I think it's important that that's, that's an option. We're doing in, we're doing it at, and planning. There's no objection to that. Well, we may have, we may have to consider doing that for these positions moving forward. The jobs that we have now for those employees that are in our system, we have to respect our agreements. We did, this council did vote to give three years of three percent of raises. Those are, those are good raises and we have to deal with what we got. And, and I have a hard time spending so much money when we don't have it looking forward. So, um, thank you for the explanation on, on the larger device. The storm water is going to kill us. The, we could, yeah, we could cut, um, some trash pickup, just pick up on Mondays and Fridays or Mondays and Thursdays, but we'll always have to do that somewhere or the other. And maybe that's temporary workers or, or contract employees. The employees that we have here, we're set. We can't, we can't afford to take on the additional pension costs, benefit costs. So I have a question for you, um, Director O'Leary. This five million from April thirtieth, page eight, um, that's based on, without these enhancements? Is that correct?
That is without any enhancements.
Right.
Is, is correct. And, and again, um, the five million was an estimate based on projections that Purge has given us and so forth. So I'm not suggesting it'll be five million dollars to the dollar. But I think, I think on April thirtieth, I said probably three to six or, I mean, it's some way, it's a big number, you know, and, but it, it, it does not.
Right. So, um, those are my comments for now.
Those are your questions for them?
That's it, I mean.
Laura, questions, comments?
Thank you, Mayor Medina. I've been sitting here listening and I appreciate the comments and the questions. I think we just need to remember, the staff has come forward with these recommendations based on their expertise, not ours. I think it's the requirement of each of our council members to be sure of the recommendations given by staff before coming to these meetings. And I think the thing that I heard and I, I know from firsthand experience, that fines are very costly. Fines can cost you millions of dollars. So when it comes to N P D E S violations, there's no, there's no cutting corners. That can get very costly per day. I also understand that hiring additional staff at this time is difficult. But again, staff has come and addressed these issues and areas that we need to, to increase. We have the money in the budget this year, we may not have it by twenty-one. But I'm also with the forefront of, we're going to figure out ways to bring in more revenue to the city of San Bruno. Unless you're going to give up, I'm not. So I want to be careful on what we spend, but I also know you can't cut corners and potentially incur costs that we weren't even expecting.
Thank you, Laura. Um, for, for me, I'm, you know, whereas we're getting into new requests, I'm sharing some of the, all our concerns of ongoing costs. You know, some of my thought was, do you make this into a one-time rather than ongoing? But I obviously I know the requirements are required. And it's not about if we can, or we hope we can, or if the federal government says we didn't meet your deadline, court, you know, can we have more time? The answer is no. I know we, when we went down this path of the litigation, the fines, baykeepers, we go down on this list of the past and what that cost in staff resources as well as cost to the city. So though, um, and I'm going to have maybe some concerns on some of the, the other items down below or not. But at this point, to me, I'm, I'd have a hard time sitting up here if we got a notice or served or fined and we are going to spend far beyond this and we have to meet these deadlines. And, uh, we well know when one region, the regional board starts, there's another one that follows. And we've already experienced that bite both ways. So those are my comments for now. So what we have here is we have three items. We have the replacement of the, uh, out-of-compliance traffic signs. We have the fencing section surrounding the Pine Box culvert between First and Seventh Avenue. And we have the add two-point-oh, uh, maintenance workers one slash two for the public works for the new requests. So we'll take that as a, together if there's action by council.
Um, I move that we approve those three items.
Is there a second? Okay, there is no second, then.
All right, I, I, I.
Okay, so I have a motion by Irene, seconded by Laura, to approve the, the three items. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Medina.
No.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar.
No.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Medina.
Yes. Okay, now we're going to move on to Parks and Facility Services Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. I'll represent this item tonight. This item has been considered in prior year budgets as a supplemental enhancement to, to fill a position that was eliminated a number of years ago at the transition of the former, the incumbent to that position. The position is responsible for a broad range of management duties that are currently being neglected and not completed or completed on a limited catch-as-catch-can and I would say in an entirely insufficient manner, which is not a reflection on the staff, but, um, the capacity of our two supervisors who, to, upon whom all of the responsibilities for supervision of our parks, our facilities and our tree crews fall. The primary area that is being neglected and one that I think is increasingly important in our city's operation and in the ability of our community, our city to maintain its facility infrastructure is in the area of facility, um, maintenance or, or capital maintenance, repairs and, uh, ability to address a wide variety of both those issues as well as planning and, uh, managing the future needs for renovation. And perhaps renovation of facilities is, is a, is a more significant area. Currently we have two, as I said, supervisors. They report up to the director. The director has an even broader scope of responsibilities. This is the only area in our city of significant services and no other department, uh, does do supervisors bear the entire responsibility for their subject matter areas. And, um, I have, I have been increasingly reminded by, uh, directors, both current and previous, of the very, very high volume, continuing high volume of tree-related work, fire hazard abatement work and other, uh, open area, uh, vegetation management, tree management that continues to be an issue of, um, I would say substandard response by the city. And that's strictly due to our capacity to take the proactive, forward-looking, um, management approach that is necessary in order to address all of the various operational issues that fall to this department. I think we do generally a good job of what we do. Many things are not being done and require the attention, planning and, uh, capability of our department to respond in a more proactive and capable manner.
Thank you. Questions or comments to the city manager regarding the position? Marty? Michael?
I just want to state that I, I do understand the need for, uh, filling the position. It does sound like there are some things that have been neglected and our, um, public spaces are definitely very important to the community. But being that, um, with the completion of the new facility, I imagine that there will be some other changes in, uh, the sort of staffing that we'll have to do for, for our park and rec department. And, uh, I'm wondering if it might not make sense to hold off and see, and I know that's, it's still some time away, but, um, again, with, without, um, any definitive funding sources or guarantees that, you know, we'll be able to fund these things, I, I would, uh, question why we would want to add that position. At this point, if, if we've been limping along, maybe we could limp along a little longer until we know that we, uh, do have a more stable footing financially for the long term.
Did you now? Go ahead. Go ahead, Laura.
I just wanted to echo, uh, Councilmember Salazar's comments.
She wanted to echo Sal, Laura.
I'm going to sound redundant. It, it's basically the same thing. We have, we don't have so much money. And I like, uh, my, uh, Councilman Salazar's analogy of we're limping along a little bit. And, yeah, we might have to limp a little further. So I'm sorry. I, I have to stand firm on, on, on this and I wish. And I wish there was a way we could just say yes to everything. Of course, it's, it's not that we do not respect the opinion of staff and realize, or at least I don't, well, I'm sure we, but speaking for myself, I respect your staff's opinion. Just that here, it's, it's, we have to, honestly, we should be cutting now as, as we're getting ready for this shortfall with no, no sure revenue. Our, our community has to understand that. We, I mean, we don't have the money for this. And so the things that are most important, we take care of, is police and fire. And then we work our way from there. What else, what else, what else can we? I'm trying to think of, how, how would we cut $5 million in two years out of our budget if we don't have it? How hard that's going to be? So I'm sorry, but I, I can't support this position.
Okay, for me, this won't come as a surprise because this is a position that's come up before that I have said we should hold off on until we had more folks in the field doing the work. I know we have the two new parks that are not online at this point. So I believe this is a position that should be held off. Do we have a motion in regards to, to not accept the position, to move forward on the position?
I'll make a motion to, to not fill this position of the supervisor.
I'll second that.
The manager. Motion and second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Medina.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Connell.
No.
Councilmember Salazar.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Medina.
Yes. The next one now is for the firefighter slash prevention management, eliminating the part-time inspector.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council members. I wanted to just provide some brief background on the position for your understanding. So after the 2010 gas pipeline explosion, it was very clear that everyone involved in the response, both initially and, and those that worked in the EOC, performed fantastic and in many cases heroic job. However, it was clear that there was also improvements that needed to, to be made to make the community and the, and the city staff more prepared for a disaster. The city identified in 2013, 14 budget money to do that. And it was decided at that time to use that money to fund, partially fund a administrative battalion chief position that would function administratively in, in the fire department, as well as have the role of emergency management, of which I filled that role. I just wanted to give a brief update on some of the things that, that we were able to accomplish during that time. We were able to work with members of the emergency management community to learn best practices, share information and participate, and develop exercises. Reorganized the EOC to address the issues that were raised in, in the after-action reports on the explosion. Develop section-specific binders to outline roles and responsibilities of those different role players in the EOC, as well as train, train staff in those different EOC sections. We participated in multiple exercises, as well as recommended specific training for individuals in emergency management. Additionally, we collaboratively coordinated the efforts of the 2016 local hazard mitigation plan that ultimately enabled us to recover approximately $140,000 in the January 2017 storms. In August in 2015, the position was reassigned. And I went back as a shift battalion chief, but kept the responsibility as a collateral duty on shift. And I was able to continue most of the efforts. I had the benefit of, of having received a tremendous amount of training when I was in the administrative position, develop relationships with people, both at the state and at the local level in emergency management. So I still had a strong focus on emergency management, but it was impossible to stay as engaged as, as I was in that, in that administrative position. And then in July 2017, I was promoted to the position of fire chief. And those duties and emergency management have been provided at a pretty limited level since then. Currently, there's not a position in the fire department that can take on this function and the duties. Some sort of new, some sort of new, in my opinion, new position is going to have to be provided to be able to provide the level of service that I think the city and the community deserves. So much like we did in 2014, like I said, there are various ways to maybe get at this, but we believe the best way is to do, once again, a combined position. So this firefighter position would have multiple responsibilities. So in addition to emergency management, the position would be responsible for fire inspections, fire investigations, and wildland mitigation. The, the position will also benefit the Fire Prevention Bureau, who is, is seeing an increased workload with the amount of development, much like David spoke to earlier. We also play a role in that process with inspections. Additionally, as a result of the go ship fire, there was, there's pending legislation that's going to increase the amount of mandated inspections that we're going to have to keep up with. And previously, we did have a second full-time position in fire prevention. And that position did a significant amount of plan review. When we eliminated that position in the recession, obviously, that plan review was, is, was, and still is contracted out. So there's the expectation that eliminating that $48,000 that going to the part-time inspector, that it's just limited to inspector, this position will actually have increased duties. Some of those could include, will include plan checks, and there should be an associated potential revenue enhancement coming back. So I'll just summarize, as you know, you know, just a matter of not when, but, or not if, but when the next disaster will occur. We have completed a lot since 2014, but there's still more work to do. And I think the best way to stay focused on preparation for the staff and the community is to have someone dedicated and working as an emergency manager, attending those meetings and trainings, and coordinating preparedness through each city department. And I just think no city should be more well aware of that than our city. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Questions of the Chief? Michael?
Chair, thank you. So Chief, the work that you've done is definitely commendable. It looks like you've been pulling double duty for a while. Definitely the, the mitigation stuff that you spoke about is definitely important. And I know it's been a concern of a lot of people. And the, the preparation, I know that never ends. You can never be prepared enough. My one question to you would be, if we asked you to sort of limp along for another, another year, could you do it? Could we keep things going, although perhaps not optimally, for maybe this fiscal year, and then revisit this next fiscal year? And in that time, maybe develop some sort of plan for getting the funding for this? It's, it's a very expensive position. I understand the importance of it, but that would be my question.
I mean, I would say, I would say it's, it's a challenge. It has been a challenge, and if I'm being honest, we have not kept up. You know, can, can we, so to speak, check the box? Yeah, I guess, I guess my expectations of what we've been through and where we should be are a little different. I think we should be a trendsetter in that field and not just somebody that's checking that box. It's really difficult to, to plan an exercise. And I'll just give you an example, there's an exercise coming up, Yellow Command. And part of what we did, I didn't mention, but we, we got a grant through the San Bruno Foundation to get shelter equipment. Okay, so we're going to have our own shelter equipment, it was before council and you guys approved it, to, to actually open our own shelter. And so this Yellow Command is based on that exercise. And I just have not been able to attend, I mean, these exercises go on, but the, the preparation for them, the multiple meetings, the, the planning process, I just have not, they conflict with other meetings. I try to get other people to go, but it's just hard to get people that are on a firefighter schedule who live in another area to come down on a Wednesday morning to go to a meeting that I can't go to. So it's a challenge to stay, to stay, you know, current. Really, a big part of what you do in those exercises is behind the scenes. And it's, it's in meetings, like I said, it's preparing staff. You don't just throw staff into, into an exercise. You have to kind of ramp them up, and that usually requires two or three hours per each, each department leading up to that exercise of, of training to get them ready. So that when, when, you know, it's, it's tough to get staff for four hours to, to, to do it, to do, to give up their regular duties. You're hearing that tonight, how busy everybody is. So when I do get that, those people there, I want to make sure they're prepared, right? So that four hours is used properly. It's just a challenge to do that, if I'm being totally honest.
Okay. And do you anticipate hiring somebody outside of the department? Or promoting or moving somebody from within the department to fill it?
I am, I am, I am extremely optimistic that there is an internal candidate that would be interested. And so, you know, that, that, that would allow us some delay in this, hiring this position. And that person would come offline, so there, you know, there'd be an overtime cost. But it would take a period of time to hire somebody. But, but there is at least one or two individuals that, that have shown some interest, and I think that would be what's best for the organization.
Okay, thank you.
Marty?
Thank you for that update and as serving on the community preparedness. I, I, I see now how much effort and planning it takes to, to be responsive. We're going to see an emergency, of course. It's only a matter of when. I'm aware of my comments of being really conservative about our expenses, but this is one area where I'm in favor, and, and we have to have it. So I support, I support this position.
Laura?
Um, this is a tough one, because it's a big dollar amount. And it's something that's difficult to then take away the cost. So I'd like to see if there's something we can do in the short term, offering additional overtime to get through the year and reevaluate next year.
Did you, I think it was more of a statement, but did you want to respond to?
I, I, I don't know that I heard, I...
I think the concern, and help me...
Well, I'm sorry, I guess, because what I, what previously said was, we could move someone into that position and not fill that position. That we could do, using overtime to, so is that the question, or is the question, can we just hodgepodge put people to do the responsibility on overtime? And that, that would be a challenge. Like, like I said, the learning curve to get up to speed to do this job is extremely time-consuming. So, so my objective would be to get someone on the administrative schedule, doing the training, and getting, and getting run up to be able to do all the different things they can do. But we certainly could not, we could hold off on hiring for a period of time, which we, you know, currently, we're usually a position, right now, we're a position down. It takes us a period of time to, to ramp up when we have a vacancy. So we could certainly, we could certainly do that.
Thank you. And for my comments, serving on the Emergency Service Council, if you're there at that meeting, you're obviously not a community preparedness. Can't be both places. And I do, you know, we go through a lot of things that are going on with the county and what are hot topics. Michael, you've sat in for me, the last one. And so this is one thing that I worry about constantly. This council, most of us have seen two tragedies, one this April and one prior to that, much on a horrific scale in 2010. Both were horrific. But I think training is critical. I think preparedness is key. And I think in order for us to have the training necessary to react when it's time, when it happens, because everybody's going to be looking to City Hall and to its staff, and to its leadership. And so that, to me, is something I do not want to toy with. Though it is a high cost. Even postponing a little bit would be something we could reserve, you know, save on. But I'm going to be supporting this. So this is in regards to, again, the addition of a firefighter slash prevention, prevention management, and eliminating the part-time inspector. Is there action by council? Oh, no, no, rejected.
Through the chair?
Yes.
So I, I am going to support the position, although it is very expensive. And I would just ask that wherever possible, we do try to find other areas that perhaps are less critical, where we can try to cut back a little, to try to balance it out a little bit. I, my concern about our ability to keep this going, I, I think it's still a valid concern, especially when we get into the bigger dollar positions. I mean, keeping those going is, is going to be tough. So again, appreciate everything that you do, and just ask you to please continue to be mindful of the bottom line. So...
I certainly will.
Okay. And with that, I'll introduce this one for...
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye. Next one is the contract counter technician.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, similar to the, the other position I discussed with you this evening, the associate planner, the context is a very high level of development activity. During this, this fiscal year, 18, 19, we're expecting about 90,000 square feet of new commercial development, 83 residential units. On the building side, on the planning side, we're looking at perhaps 500 new residential units and about 80,000 square feet of commercial space, and 34 hotel rooms to be processed on the planning side. We'll also be dealing with several hundred code enforcement cases during this fiscal year. And when we look at public projects that are going to be going through the Community Development Department, working with other staff, of course, zoning code update, Bay Hill specific plan, downtown comprehensive parking management plan, downtown streetscape plan, and on and on and on. We have a high level of development activity. We're projecting, as indicated in the budget, that in terms of number of residential building permits that would come across the counter, again, this is a counter technician position we're talking about, it could be about 1,408 residential building permits, 85 commercial building permits. And in terms of building inspections, we're expecting maybe as many as 8,500 building inspections. So you kind of think about this position, what does this position do? It's a combination position. It's working at the counter, providing support and service to our customers at the counter, over the phone, providing information to people that come to the counter. It's doing such things as some over-the-counter permitting, plan checkings. For example, the counter technicians handle some of the solar permits, small residential solar, vehicle charging stations. They also handle, do plan review and plan check and issue permits on small remodels, bathrooms, kitchens. They process home occupation permits, business compliance permits. They also work with our planning commission. One of the individuals works with our planning commission in terms of the noticing for the planning commission, architecture review committee meetings, preparing minutes, attending meetings. They also are in charge of collecting the call-in inspections on the inspection hotline, and then putting those together so that the building official can assign the, the inspections to the inspectors we have. There's also the intake, the intake of all these applications that I mentioned, taking them in, making sure that they're complete, processing them, tracking them, making sure that the various internal staff and outside consultants, CSG, WC3, the other firms we work with, are providing responses and getting the information back to our customers, our citizens, in a timely manner. And, and this position would be in support of code enforcement in terms of working with applications that come in to correct cases. Again, this person in this position would be able to do plan check. This is, by the way, an existing position, I should point out. We have a person in this position currently from 1718. 1718, the city council actually approved a part-time position focusing on supportive code enforcement. With the increased activity that we... With the increased activity that we have at the counter, we have a very busy counter. We provide service from eight to five, Monday through Friday, continuous throughout the day. We have peak periods between nine and three, but regularly we have five and six people at our counter during that time. So I would, would see this, this individual being a combination position, providing support to code enforcement and, and really providing support in the area of counter technician activities, as I've described, during a very high level of, of activity in our community. This is a one-time request, could be ongoing, but this is not a permanent staff person. This is a contract staff person that, again, we would monitor this individual's, uh, work, contributions, and, and we would make sure that in terms of activity levels, if indeed at some point we wouldn't need this position, we could actually not continue this service. But for the foreseeable future, we see a strong need for this position to continue to provide the service that our customers and community expects. I'd be happy to respond to any of your questions and thank you.
Questions?
So being that the position is a contract position, um, I think I'm inclined to, uh, agree to it. There, there is certainly a need, I believe, in, in your department to, uh, help things, uh, move along. What, what I would ask, well, let, let me ask you this. Do you believe that everything that could be done to streamline, uh, make things available online, make things self-service have been done, that could possibly be done to help alleviate the workload? Let me, let you answer that first.
I, I would say that we've done many things. We, we do have a really, I'll say, an aggressive website. We have a lot of information on the Community Development Department website. We are trying to provide, as I described here, over the counter plan check services for our customers to streamline. So not only the plans examiner that we talked about earlier this evening, that is involved more in structural, we've trained our counter technicians to be able to do these permits over the counter, like I described, the small residential solar, the charging stations, the small remodels, bathrooms and kitchens. Again, to provide streamlined expedited service to our customers. So, yes, I think we've, we've done a lot. We can always improve. Everybody can always improve. But are we doing a lot? Yes, we are.
Okay. And could we approve this position, say, for only a year? And then make sure that we come back and revisit it, uh, at the end of the year, rather than just say that the position will exist in perpetuity?
Is, isn't this a one-time?
It is. It is for this fiscal year, is the request. That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Marty?
So, I'm going to vote no on this. I understand you guys are busy. Has code enforcement implemented the iPads yet?
The, the code enforcement officers have had initial training on the iPads. And we are working with IT to work out some, some bugs in the system. But we do have the iPads. We've had some initial training. We've got a couple of things we need to work out. Again, this is a combination position. Code enforcement is a part of it. The counter activity, as I described, literally, you know, thousands of intakes that need to be processed. This, this individual, in terms of efficiency within our department and organization, the idea is that this person is cross-trained. The fact is, we have this person currently and the person is cross-trained and, and is doing a terrific job in, in support of the community and the organization and the department. And is able to do the over the counter plan checks, support code enforcement, uh, be a utility player, a true team player. So we are enjoying and benefiting from this service currently.
Okay. And if this person is doing plan checks, there should be some cost recovery?
In terms of the permitting fees, yes.
But actually doing the plan check?
Yes.
They're actually doing the plan check.
They're, they're doing...
It's a different plan check fee.
You, you're, you're correct.
Right.
And there is, we're implementing an over the counter plan check fee. And you're correct about that, yes. That is correct.
10% of their time may be doing the plan check?
Perhaps.
Yeah, so 13...
Perhaps.
Looking at that, 13,000 recovery, but it's 13,000.
Yeah. That's, that's part of the function.
Right, right.
That's clearly part of the function.
Uh, that's all my questions. I mean, I, I'm sorry, I just... I've never heard yet from anybody complain that they, they, they stood in line too long at the counter. No one's ever, I mean, in three years, no one's ever contacted me, like, hey. I get, I get calls about everything else and emails about just about everything else, parking, enforcement this, or, or the way our downtown looks. But, I mean, I've been lucky so far, you know, knock on wood somewhere, this is plastic. But, um, I, I haven't got a home permit, you know, at some point, because I'm cheap, right? I'm not going to remodel my kitchen because that's way too expensive right now. But, um, we have to limp, you know, we can't be, we can't be running. We don't, and I, I'm just, I'm just being repetitive, so, um, I, I...
Those kinds of calls, though, maybe don't always go to a council member. I get those calls at times. And I go out and I work with the staff to, to try to make sure that we provide better service. Uh, we had a call like that today. And the individual, the staff person and myself got on the phone, talked to the applicant, figured out their need and resolved it. Again, it's, it's a one-time, one-year cost. It's existing. This is a huge amount of development activity for this community. And every cubicle in the department is packed with applications. And some of those applications have been there a while. And we need to process them. And every single individual in that department is working at full capacity. So with this position in place currently.
Okay. Laura?
I, I don't have any comments.
Okay. So I, I have some on this. This is one I'm contemplating, even though I know it's a one-time. You're saying there is some cost recovery. It's to provide support to the high volume of code enforcement activity and streamline slash improve effectiveness of response to code enforcement and development application items. But you're, you're saying in another time is the cubicles are full, things have been delayed. We have three code enforcement personnel. I know we haven't talked about the app in a while, but, you know, some things as far as getting it shown as, um, completed, so that a person could go back on and say, oh, I've seen it, gone through the processes, it's completed. I know I've heard from some that say, you know, I've driven by myself and it's completed. So when I see things like this, I go, well, how are we going to measure that? How are we currently measuring somebody bringing a streamlined effectiveness and efficiency? And this person is supposedly already existing, but going to be doing three different things. And go to the counter, helping the, the other calls or activities, as, as well as with code enforcement. So I, I guess I'm having a hard time with all that's being said and asked. Is that, how are we getting efficiency now? And how is this person with what you're saying is going to be done can even have the quantifier to me as a metric of how that efficiency and streamlining is going to take place and how it's going to work?
That, that's a very fair question. And I think in terms of metrics, what we put into the budget, we put in performance measures. And we put those in to give council members a clear understanding of what number of applications we are expecting to process. And so I think when you, when you actually do look at the performance measures in, in the budget for 1718 and projected for 1819, you do have, I think, a good understanding of activity and trends and the performance of the staff. We've done that as well with code enforcement. And we have provided that information to you in terms of the breakdown during study sessions of the types of code enforcement actions by category, the total number, the total number that were done, uh, in accordance with the CRM, the Community Reporting Module. So we believe in metrics too, and they are important. And we do need to measure, and we do measure. And we are providing that information to you.
And I appreciate your answer. And, and I know we talked about, uh, customer service or, you know, I mean, in some cities like San Mateo, it, you go up and just, and you punch in that you want to get a permit. And it puts you in a queue and it actually times you. And then when you're served, I mean, it's all automated. There's no, there's no handwriting on a, on a piece of paper, on a binder, about when I got in and when I got out, or if it's reminded when I got out. And, and again, as I've always said, I've gone to, other than three jurisdictions in this county, I've gone to every city and pulled a permit. Encroachment and building. So I have some experience in some respects. And in San Francisco County, that's always fun.
Sure.
And I've gone to San Mateo County to, to do the same. And it also was through the experience for me to understand what our citizenry go through and what the experience level are for others. And I still think there are things that can be done. And I, and I know it's late, so I don't want to go on and on, but I'm, I'm really, I know this person's been here, it's a one-time thing, but I'm actually having a challenge with all that I'm hearing and seeing evidence of it better. And based on what I'm hearing. And I'm not there every day. So, uh, but anyway, you're welcome to add anything you, you like, David, and then we'll, we'll get on with the vote.
Well, when, when I look at the range of development activity in this community that collectively, collectively we are handling, I think it's extremely impressive. When you look at, say, the, the number of large development projects that are currently underway for this community, we've got 841 San Bruno Avenue, the Dialysis Center. We've got the Plaza. We've got SF Police Credit Union. We've got a number of other projects that are in the pipeline moving forward. And when you look at the individual smaller applications, as I mentioned, when you look at the residential building permits that were actually issued in 2017, 18, 1,344 projected for 2018, 19, 1,408. The number of building inspections, this is a true number for this past fiscal year, 7,722 projected for this coming year, 8,495. The counter technicians had to intake this information. They had to process it, track it, work with it. So from the individual remodel to the major projects to code enforcement, the, the level of development activity collectively that our staff is handling, the broader staff, I think is, is very impressive. And I think that we, we can always improve. And, and we have obtained technology. We have gotten the iPads. We have distributed them. We are working with IT to get those up and running. And, and I think there will be some true efficiencies with those. We're doing over the counter plan checks in a number of areas right now. A year or two ago, we did not do those, as we are doing them now. So over the counter plan checks, we are introducing technology. We are looking at people to do cross-training and combination positions to provide more adaptability, flexibility within our departments. All of those are positives.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Action from council in regards, um, to the contract counter technician.
I move approval.
Is there, there's a motion in second to approve the contract counter technician. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Medina?
No.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davis? Mayor Medina?
No.
Last item, public safety dispatcher.
Good evening again. I, I guess I drew the lucky number and got to go last tonight.
Last but not least.
I appreciate you taking the time. Before I start, I'd like to, um, first of all, recognize the value of our local dispatch center. It truly makes the police department a stronger department and it, it makes the city much safer. I think we've seen that in high-profile instances, but we realize it every day. Our interaction with our community, as far as our dispatchers goes, is strong. And it makes the city stronger as well as the police department. I'm here tonight basically to, because you, the, the demand for services over the years has increased dramatically for police services and it's had a, a significant impact on our dispatch center. We responded to 83% more calls for service in 2017 than we did in 2012. That's a number from approximately 24,000 calls per year to a number that exceeds 44,000 calls per year. And as we've pointed out before, we've been pretty forthcoming, there are needs throughout the police department. We'd love to be able to, um, enforce traffic safety in a, in a more aggressive manner. We'd love to be more proactive and assume a primarily a reactive role. But the fact that we're here tonight asking for a dispatcher position, rather than officers in the field, for example, is indicative of how critical we believe, uh, the situation is with our, with our dispatchers. Uh, the responsibility of our dispatchers are vast, they're the ultimate multitaskers. Typically, people, uh, kind of see what they, or believe what they see on TV, where it's just somebody answering an I-1 call and dispatching a call, which is true, it's part of what they do. But they're continually, um, answering phone calls for, for service, dispatching officers in the field and documenting everything, everything that they do. And they do that in a 12-hour shift, uh, which can be, uh, which can be quite taxing. They are truly a, a lifeline to, to the public and to police officers. They truly provide a public safety, um, uh, role that, that we rely on. Um, and, and we'll soon be, um, promoting the ability to accept text to 911, which is just going to, um, enhance what they're going to be asked to do, as well as manage the, managing the numerous databases in computer systems that they, uh, they currently do. The true issue here is, um, the, the, the fact that our dispatchers work alone for 21 of the 24 hours each day. That's where the, the true issue lies and what we're trying to address. The industry standard is two dispatchers for a city of our size or even cities that are much smaller. And we're trying to get there. And while the addition of one dispatcher won't get there, um, it'll drastically reduce the number of hours each day that a dispatcher will be sitting in that, uh, dispatch center alone, um, having to do things that are sometimes not humanly possible, um, for an extended period of time. There, uh, the, the, beyond the, the, the call volume, um, there are significant stress levels with working alone for that period of time that we've seen, it's taken a toll on, uh, a number of employees that I'll talk about in a little bit. But there's also some practical, um, considerations. In addition to being able to answer calls effectively and provide the level of service that, uh, that we currently do, there's lunch breaks that need to be provided. There's, people have to use the restroom. Uh, there, there are some practical matters that we, that we struggle to, to, uh, to cope with. Um, and, and what we do now oftentimes is, just to cover lunch breaks, we're bringing in, uh, ordering people to come in for three hours because it's the minimum to cover a one-hour lunch break, which is, which is completely ineffective. So those are some of the things that we're, we are challenged, challenged with. Again, the industry standard is two. Thanks to the, the council's actions over the last, uh, several years, we do have a strong, uh, virtual dispatch partnership with the Burlingame Police Department that allows us to, um, have an immediate full force multiple... full force multiplier. We've seen the benefits of this. When Burlingame had a ransomware attack and their computers went down, we seamlessly were able to take over and serve as their dispatchers. This has happened at large traffic accidents, large fires. With the YouTube incident, we've been able to act as one, and that's a great relationship. It's a very valuable relationship, but it's based on a mutual trust, and there were some agreements from the onset that neither party would take advantage of that or lean on it too heavily. And that included not requiring extended periods of time for support, not being there for lunch breaks, and doing those types of things. And the minimum staffing level in Burlingame is two dispatchers, so they don't have to worry about that concern, why we still struggle with that. Beyond the emergency services component of this and the stress that it provides to our employees and the practical components, there's a recruitment and a retention issue to this as well. We recently lost our most senior dispatcher, and her primary reason for leaving was it got to her, working alone for a 12-hour shift on a daily basis, knowing that that one call could be, you know, you have somebody's life in your hands is kind of a stressful deal, and it's something that she didn't want to do anymore. So we're, you know, it impacted us from a retention component. We've obviously been talking about this for a couple of months since the budget process has begun, but last week, we ran into a nice example of what we're talking about. We got a complaint from a woman who called in on a non-emergency line regarding a request for service that was not an emergency type of situation, but it's still something that the police department should deal with. And she felt that she was not taken seriously, she felt that she was being put off, and had a general sense that the person on the other end of the line maybe didn't have the time for, or wasn't really into what she was asking for. And so we went back and we reviewed that call, and the dispatcher was working alone at the time, and the duration of the call with this woman was nine minutes. And during that nine minutes, the dispatcher entered six 911 calls, had seven different officers on seven different calls in the street, was managing that radio traffic, and was talking to two other agents regarding warrants, two other agencies regarding warrants that needed to be confirmed. So the woman was actually very nice when she complained, said she had been put on hold four times during the conversation. She had actually been put on hold six times, so we appreciate her conservative estimate. But those are the types of situations that our dispatchers are running into, not on a daily basis, but on an hourly basis, where they're asked to be doing things that I could never do, and we're asking to fill that second chair. The one caveat to this from a fiscal perspective is, in the immediate future, should the council be kind enough to grant this request? The state requires that dispatchers go through the same recruiting and background investigative process that a police officer does, because they have access to some very sensitive information and are asked to do some, perform some critical tasks. So in reality, if we were granted this position, we're recruiting for some vacancies now due to some dispatchers leaving us, we probably wouldn't be able to fill this position for several months. So it would be deep into the fiscal year before we fill this position. So the impact on this fiscal year's budget would probably be much less than the ongoing cost that would exist. So that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I thank you for granting me the time at this late hour.
I've always wanted to use this line. It's really hard to say no to a strong burly man with a gun. Hope you appreciate that, Rico. But in all honesty, in all honesty, you know, that's where our priorities are. It's safety for me, and I trust you. It's needed. It doesn't take away our reality still that, how are we going to pay for this? Right? And that's something that I'm hoping this council moves forward with, and, you know, we did have with Councilwoman O'Connell on the revenue ad hoc subcommittee, I mean, there's only so much we can do. And I don't know when we're going to meet again, or how we're going to start looking at these revenues, but we clearly need them, and I will support this request.
Laura?
Thank you. I agree. Police is, well, I say police is number one, and I would never want to call, hang anyone and not be able to have a responsive, quick response.
Okay, and I've already asked Michael, he said he was good, and I'm not going to echo, I concur in the safety and your request. Is there action from council?
I'll make a motion to approve the dispatcher.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.